Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are expecting engineers yet and Commissioner Hack, so hopefully they make it. Reading and approval of the minutes from August 6th.
Motion to approve is done already.
We have motion by Wolf.
Second.
And second by Keller, discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes from August 6th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you. Approval of the agenda. We're going to add under five, go five E. And that like crushing on it, crushing. Any other additions or changes? Okay, not a big, big motion. Vote to approve the agenda. Yep, motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Keller. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you. Five A, 2018 street project update. Well, we would like to get an update from the engineers too, but I'm gonna let Ted, if you wanna say a few words or what's going on.
Well, we finished our, finished the meeting. They finished up, they came in last week, did the crack ceiling around town, cut that down a couple days. Chip ceiling is scheduled for first week after the holiday coming up. They've got other jobs they need to get wrapped up to. The concrete guys should be back in town here this afternoon to get working on the rest of these curb wraps. They had a couple, they had another pressing job they had to get finished. Other than that, we'll be back in here to finish cleaning up behind the concrete as they get that done away. We gotta backfill around after they strip their forms and get that in there and then we will be able to proceed to come in for that.
Okay.
What do we have for updates coming?
Okay.
You know, did they, did they need to order a replacement manhole cover for the very west end of Divide Street there? I saw a couple of guys had taken that cover out because it was broken on two sides of it. They came back and they, they were gonna put one in. Fortunately, they measured it because it was smaller than the hole. They put that back on the truck and put the original broken one in there.
I'm not sure.
Alright.
Sometimes we have a extra those laying around and we can just swap it out if there was one that was damaged or didn't fit right. I know there's a couple others in town that when we started didn't quite fit right. Go care some of those.
Very good.
Good question for Ted or Trevor? Okay, well, we will. I guess we can wait for the engineer to come in to give their updates. Like Google down to four, five E, Monty?
Yeah, I think, I think the whole five section.
Yeah.
Six A.
Yeah. Okay, let's go on six A. So, request of citizens, free and reduced hall rent benefit for Hayes and Lyons Club.
Make a motion that we approve. We're regrouped for free hall rent for the Lyons Club.
Okay, motion by Keller.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you. Six B, dog park. Al, do you know if Jasmine is gonna be here?
I assume it's on Dr. Saturday.
Okay. Well, we'll.
It was just a quick.
Yeah, so.
Change of area possibly.
Sure, you wanna put that up real quick, Monty? So, the, the dog park, the, Al and I, well, we met here about a week and a half ago and dog park. We talked about that area over up on 10th Street by the, by the tree nursery. That we'd be, you know, look at it, shared area there, but that the city was not in favor of doing a whole lot of cleanup or taking care of the property, adding to the load of the street workers. So, the park board at their last meeting, Al, let me know if I'm wrong, but there, there was more willing to support it. And relocating to this area by the Cal Ripken baseball field. And that's Jody Marshall lives over there. So, that area, which is park board property and not city property. So, we don't, as the city council, we don't need to approve a location for this.
Close to the bike path, or I mean, the walking path. It would, you got parked into the north there, ball field area. I think it would work out. I mean, it's about 150 by 150 and what you see is two different sides, which would be smaller dogs, bigger dogs. And then a bench area as you walk in through the gates and they'll be designing where you can come in with more and move it out.
That's all chain link fence?
Yep. That's for, could be your project.
And it would be a park board's responsibility to mow it and clean up, clean up? Well, they're supposed to clean up themselves.
It's the same area, mow it out.
Okay.
It's just some areas gonna have to be a little push mower and to get in there. But I, I, I think it would work fine as good as any work, dominant we could think of.
That's probably even a better spot than over, you know, being near the bike path and you always see people, it's like they're walking around over it too.
And there's gonna be, cause I understand, there's gonna be some rules, regulations, you know? That would be set, hopefully. How can you place all of them, you know, they gotta have dog tags and their shots and it might be a little tough to do and I don't know if there's anything for the city that could be done to enforce that maybe a little more. If, if we have 500 dogs, it down there's only 20 licenses. It's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
I always remember I used to, we used to have a dog at the fire hall on a Saturday in the spring, you know, early May. There would be, one of the vets would come in and you could, it's a chance to get your tanks, get your shots updated and everything was done. That's fine. So, I don't know if there would be something that could be done in the future, kind of give a little more awareness that, you know, they are kind of required in town.
Those are any action you're excited on, the city's price?
No.
Just more for information. And if there are any questions or concerns about it.
When, when, when do you think Jasmine's gonna start? Is she gonna start fundraising that now and try doing the springtime?
Yeah, she's looking for the approval once, she finds out fundraising right away. Yeah, she's quite, was right now.
Okay. Alright.
Okay.
Any question, any other questions for? Now? Alright. Good luck.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you for your update. Alright, so that concludes anything under six. We will go back to five. We've got an update from Moore. I haven't started from Mayo already, so more engineering, we'll have you guys come and give an update on the project. That's, not sure which one of you three guys wants.
We're not sure either.
Okay.
Alright, I'll just go through real quick. You should have a copy of the estimate for the next thing. And I don't have that one in front of me, I've got a copy of myself, but, so we've got the estimate, the for the work that's done and I believe that includes all the paving that's up to date, was in there, is that correct? That was, it's the numbers you submitted to us, so. So, yeah, I'm thinking that has all of the paving now. And almost all of the, should have pretty much all of the, all the paving. The curb and gutter replacement work, does not have any of the chip ceiling, doesn't have, probably hardly any of the sidewalks because that work's still not done yet. Doesn't have the crack ceiling, their work, just started working on that. But it should have everything pretty much up to the end of paving and all utility work. So, it's getting pretty close to, we're starting to see how things are taking shape at this point, overall, overall budget. So, the, what was that, one point, just moved to 1.35 million now, so. The only thing that's a little unusual on this, and this is similar to what we did on last month, is what we did at the request of the city is we put in a quantity in here on an adjustment. What was that, is that in the back, Monty?
Yeah, it should be there.
I'm looking for the particular form, just so I can be sure, okay, so. One that looks like this, pay adjustment sheet. Now, what the story with this is, this is something that we do, there are certain circumstances under which you can decide whether or not you want to withhold an additional amount of money in addition to the regular retainage that's held on the project and for what purposes. What we put in here is under, under the item where it says, work or conditions precedent to the contractors being entitled to payment do not appear to have been met. There's a value of $170,861.43. Now, what that number represents is all of the patching that was done that for some other reason, we, we looked at and said, there was quite a bit of it that we looked at and said, you know, there's no question, this was absolutely necessary for any number of different reasons. This is the value that remains. What we're not saying is that they shouldn't get paid for it. What we're saying is that we're not sure yet. It's a discussion that we started having with the contractor and at this point, I'm not sure that everybody's completely convinced about all of the circumstances. The reality of that is probably not that high. It's up to you guys whether you want to pay any attention to this or not, or just go ahead and pay it all, or withhold this pending further discussions with the contractor, which is I think what we've got in there for recommendation. The other $890 is actually for part of a peacekeeping church where they put that concrete patch back in. There was like about a two foot strip and John correctly found one on, there's like about a two foot strip where they had to re-cut a couple of times to get, get it straight and get rid of some broken edges from construction and whatnot. And so, that's what, that's what that's referring to. It's a little bit different, that's the second paragraph in the explanation. So, that's what's going on here. Now, we did this, it's completely optional as to whether, how you guys handle this. It, you can take that, you can ignore it, you can put a different number in there. You can do whatever you want, you can, and pay whatever it is you think is appropriate all the way up to the entire amount that's requested by the contractor. So, what's, again, what this is, is it's a, it's an additional withholding. It's not necessarily a, no, they don't deserve it, it's just in question tomorrow. So, however you guys want to handle that is up to you. I don't know that it probably pays for us to get into the details of stuff. I would suggest it probably makes more sense to sit down with the contractor one more time and go through each individual patch and the explanations and that kind of thing. What it's all predicated on is section 411, section 411 of the DOT specifications for milling pavement service. And what it basically says is that coordinate milling and paving operations so that no section of milled roadway has public or construction traffic operating on it for more than five days. If public or construction traffic operates on the milled service for more than five days, repair the roadway as directed by the engineer at no additional cost to the department, or in this case, the city. So, that's the piece that is causing the consternation. It was more than, the patches were done, the ma, the paving was done more than five days, the patches were done more than five days. Some of them were only a few days, just a handful of days different. Some of them were weeks outside of what was specified. Without getting into whether or not the five day number is appropriate or not appropriate, again, that's probably a detail that can be talked about specifically with the contractor rather than getting into it right now, unless you want to. But that's the piece that is the reason for that, is that on that specification, it says the contractor's responsible. How much of it is reasonable to hold the contractor responsible for, that still is part of what the discussions are. So, up to you guys as to what you want to do about it, how you want to handle that.
So, let me recap just a little bit. You're saying the pay estimate is 1.35 million. The amount in question to make it, to, if we pay this 1.35, that would include the 170,000, do you guys have a question?
Yes.
No.
No.
No. It should have been the way it was done.
So, 1.522, or 1,1522,000, then you subtract off 172,751. So, the net result would be 1.35.
Yeah.
There.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, it's in the middle, in here.
Okay, I'm looking for, yeah, the 1.522, 1522, 411.12. That's the amount due, including 170,000. We reduced it by the 170,000, so our recommended payment is the 1.349. But council will approve whatever amount up to the full amount due, if you want, it's up to you.
Comments, questions?
I, I would like to see us have some further conversation with regard to that. I mean, I live on Divide Street, the end of Divide Street. Now, for, for the first period of time, it seemed to me, and I'm not a road expert, but seemed like everything was holding up very well and then started seeing spots here and there that progressively got worse and worse. I would be comfortable in the, making a motion to approve the recommended payments to the contractor in the amount of 1,349,659.69 cents. Followed then by further discussions to talk through that.
It's withholding the 170.
Yep. 172,751.
Well, it's the 170,000 because the, that other 2,000 or whatever is already being held in.
Right. Alright.
Go second, Ted.
Here we have a motion and a second discussion. Now, we've had earlier discussion with the contractor. They're willing to at the date, felt that you're, the 11th was 11,000, that you thought that was?
The letter of the 10th.
Yeah.
This takes, doesn't, doesn't apply, take that in consideration at all, so.
Yeah.
Jerry, go for it.
Yeah.
Trevor Christiansen, Mail Construction, most of you that don't know, I'm sorry. I just want you to realize that 1786143 is all of the work involved with patching about 1,500 ton mix. So, it's, it's not necessarily the difference from paying for the mix at a regular price versus a patching price. So, there's 1,500 ton of mix that we put down in those patch areas. And that includes the removal of all those areas, the asphalt mix that went in, the oil that's in the mix. All of that is being deducted at this point in time in 170,000. It's not just the additional cost to pay for patch. So, it's all being deducted, whereas the last estimate had, that you did pay for, had 1,104 ton of mix for patching on it. And it's being reduced now down to 600 round numbers. So, you're actually taking mix away on this estimate that was paid on a previous estimate. So, it's not just the patching, whether it should be paid for patching question here and what's being recommended, but they're actually taking all of the payment away for removal, mix, oil, regular price and patching price. And, and we'd certainly feel, be willing to sit down again and talk through this. We're prepared to do that as soon as we want to because 170,000 dollars being taken away from us for work that we did is major. And, and that's, that's why we're here and, and we want to work through it. We tried to be working folks with you guys from the beginning and all through this project and we want to continue to be that way. But 170,000 dollars being deducted when a chunk of that was on the last estimate is hard for us to swallow. This is taking money away from us that we had on the last estimate. So, it's, I know you're looking at big numbers of paying a million 350 and that's a lot of money. And so, 170,000 doesn't seem like much, but it is to us.
So, so what I heard you say is that the 170 isn't just the, the additional repairs that we saw because that was laid open for, for a longer period of time?
Well, that, that is, that's debatable and I don't know if you want to get into that right now. But what we did was, there, there was 2,117 ton of asphalt that we put into patch areas, which is about 6% of the whole project. We did 30, a little over 36,000 ton of mix total in town. So, this, if you, if you don't pay the 170,000, their recommendation is to pay for just under about 600 ton of patching is what they came up with, that they say is definitely should be paid based on our previous agreements. We have agreements in place for all of these costs that we agreed to quite some time ago. And so, it's reduced now from 2,117 ton down to 600 ton. So, there's about 1,500 ton that's being taken out.
600 ton?
600 ton of asphalt.
Yep.
It's five, the exact number's on there, it's 589 or 598 or something like that. Tons of patching that they're actually paying for. So, so there's, you know, that, that's, that's the change. And the last estimate had 1,100 ton on there, so it's actually going down from the last paid estimate.
That's what you have to prove, Al's taken off.
So, I, you know, I think it's, it is very important that we sit down and, and talk about this and come to terms on it. We've tried to be open and honest and forward on everything that we could perceive. And it's, it's kind of hard that after the work's all done and after it's all been completed, that now to come back and say, well, we told you to do this, but we're not gonna do it for it.
But we've been talking about this patching issue for a while, not, not just since it's been over. But it's not a new discussion or new topic since the project's been, the pavement's been finished, right? This is something that we've been, we've been talking about earlier than that.
Well, it wasn't really brought to our attention that it wasn't gonna be paid for until we were done doing it all.
Sure, sure, but we did talk about the degradation of the, of the the streets after they're milled and opened for that.
Yeah, actually, you're, you're exactly right because we brought it up and, and we've had conversations with Luke on it before we even started doing the milling, that we were concerned a lot of falling apart, how much patching was going to be needed. And we've got those recorded in here, weekly meeting minutes back as early as May. We brought it up before we even started milling. And we were concerned that this was gonna happen.
I, I don't want to get into the minutia of every, of all the different patches that we have in this project. There were quite a few and some of them, I think, we asked for them to be done also.
That's not included in that, that's taken out.
Right. I guess the sticky point, guys, is what, what it cost us to be open for so long. When we look at days between milling and overlaying of 36, 36, 37, 41, 40, 40, 41, you know? And the fact that we know that your subcontractor who did the milling wanted to get in and out as quick as possible. And the fact that, you know, he mailed the entire community what he had to be done. And then, and then those being open for so long, if he would have just S1, milled it, paved it, moved S2, S3, S4. If, you know, that's part of the discussion that we had too and that was, you guys said that this is a common practice, the way you did it this summer, correct?
For city streets. But it's not common to mail that deep. Normally, we would mail hedges. This is the first job where we'd have mailed two inches on the streets or four inches on the streets, like, like I mentioned before.
Okay.
So, I think there's a little argument about those dates and those times because we started milling on June 11th, was the first day we did any milling. And when we started, we did the full depth sections first. So, it was June 13th or 14th when we actually started doing some of the two inch milling. That, that was that first date that we did any two inch milling. We started paving on July 2nd and we paved pretty much straight on through the whole month of July. And, and so, there was a lot of discussions about, should we cover the four inch milling first? Should we cover the full depth streets first? Should we cover the two inch milling first? And a lot of the discussions were centered around on a weekly basis that, you know, the two inch milling probably isn't priority. You know? And then we started doing this patching and that started slowing us down, doing more patching. And we ran into the four inch milling streets. And so, what are we gonna do with those because there's nothing left there? We gotta come up with a plan to fix those. That delays everything when we're trying to do that, which you guys met right away, came up with it. We came up with a proposal right away that where we thought we could save you a bunch of money to fix those, do them right, make good streets out of them, which we did and you agreed to and we cemented it.
Yep.
And, and all of that stuff takes time. And, and when we started the two inch milling, our conversations with engineers were, we're concerned about this. We're afraid they're gonna fall apart, what's gonna happen here? And the response we got was, let's mail them, let's see what they look like, look like, we'll look at them. If, if they're broken, we'll patch them, we'll, we'll come and we'll look at it. Well, in a lot of cases, it was a week or two till we got any direction as to what we're gonna do with these.
That long?
Yeah.
So, I remember when, when we had to make this, we tried to get them done within two or three days. Special meetings and.
People have vacations, people are gone, they had different people coming and going. We had to get the right people here on board to look at them and make those decisions and what, what should we do with them? And in the meantime, we're sitting there waiting. And, and to be honest, I think that pulling out this DOT spec on the five days, I, I think that's a last, last ditch effort, trying to save some costs and throw something back in our face because this job wasn't designed or built around DOT specs.
But it was bid using that specification.
There's, I'm not gonna get an argument with you about this.
But I'm gonna, okay.
There's very few things in here that are centered around DOT specs. And they're, and, and that's normal for a city job because North Port of DOT doesn't do citywide jobs like you did. Their specs aren't set up or designed for citywide jobs. And that's why the engineer prepared a lot of different notes, a lot of different specs, a lot of different things in the plans. And the approach that we take to paving it is different because actually the, the DOT spec verbatim says, place the pavement overlay within five calendar days of mailing the pavement surface. They're talking about pavement overlay on highway where you've got trucks and steady traffic going. It, it's not geared towards a city job at this point. So, I feel like that we've done everything quickly and efficiently. So um, I feel like that we've done everything quickly and efficiently. We're open, honest, this is how we're gonna do it. And, and to say that a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of work is, is our fault. You know, we are definitely not gonna, not gonna be happy with that.
We had, we had brought up several times on, in our meeting before the milling started and within the week that we did start that there's soft areas out there, there's thin areas out there.
We knew there'd be some.
Yeah, I mean, even after our first week, I got a note that, you know, there, there's numerous soft areas out there after we did this two inch mill.
Sure.
I mean, so it was no surprise, I mean, it, we were finding it on, on every street, but now to be said.
Not every, not every street Ted.
Well, not every street, but there's a lot of streets out there.
Yeah, but.
There's a handful, but we, we got a lot of patches out there.
I guess the argument comes is that were, were they still soft and after three, four, five, six days? Or were they soft after fifteen, twenty days after there was traffic going out?
Well, most of those are, are areas where it was thin, where the pavement was thin. We took out an inch or less of pavement, most of those, which, which as we discussed before, putting two inches of pavement on top of an inch of thin pavement that's not very strong isn't gonna last very long for the city in the long term. So going in and patching those is a definite benefit to the city and to the streets and to the overall life of them because those areas were weak and soft and they would've failed eventually. We had the discussion, I'm sure I can't remember your name, but you, you brought up, you know, it rained on there and had they not been sitting open if the rain hadn't done it? How much damage did the rain do to them, which no one can really quantify? Um, we didn't have a lot of rain days during our paving period. I mean, we started the second of July and paved pretty much every day we wanted to, you know, through the end of July. There wasn't much rain there. The rain would've been right before we started paving, you know, in the end of June. But if, if the rain would've been, say, a problem which could've caused the pavement to fail quicker, then, then I have the question, why didn't it happen on the whole street? Why didn't we have the whole street fall apart? Because it rained the same on the whole street. Why are these isolated patch areas? And, and the reason is, is because the pavement was thin in those areas or the subgrade was weak. The majority of, of that patching wasn't down necessarily the middle of the street. A lot of it was along the curb area, which is the weaker point. How thick was it there? Not very thick. Is it typical for them or us or anybody to take cores along the curb? Not usually, you're not concerned about pavement along the curb. But once we milled that two inches out and you're left with only an inch, if a car drives over there, it's weak, it's gonna, it's gonna bust. And, and once it starts busting, then they grow on you. And that's probably back to your comment, how come we didn't see this day one or day two? They're, they're holding in tight, it's crap, they're, they're busted up. And then as traffic drives on it, starts showing up, starts moving, starts breaking on. And, and those areas were definitely weak, that's why they needed to be patched. And that's why more engineering told us to patch them and that's why we patched them. It isn't because we enjoyed doing it or wanting to do it, because we sure did. And, and with all that patching was a huge extra cost to us. And, and the cost that we agreed to with you ahead of time is actually cheaper than what the DOT spec calls out. So we negotiated a lower price and didn't follow the DOT spec for the patching. And now the DOT spec's coming back at us. You didn't do what it said here. So in some instances, it's being used in our favor and against us. It's, it's, the DOT spec really doesn't apply to the city job. I, I know that there are notes saying all of this is what you gotta do plus the DOT spec. But how much of the DOT spec really plus and how are we supposed to decide for that? I mean, we came in from day one with a schedule saying this is how we plan to do it. And we pretty much stuck to it.
No.
Jer, you have some.
I agree with a lot of his, what he's saying, but that, that's not entirely. The schedule did change from what you guys presented at the beginning and, you know, we didn't get a chance to review that or approve changing it, so.
We had weekly meetings.
I mean, well, I know, but, you know, just taking the notes right out of the pre-con minutes and, you know, so don't wanna give that to not.
And, and that was gonna be my point is that we're starting to, we're starting to get into some of the details of the, the questions. And, you know, there's, there are some things that I would probably disagree a little bit with, with Pete in, in some regards. I don't really plan on getting into it unless you want me to. I figured it's probably more appropriate to just kind of have a discussion about this rather than take up your regular meetings tonight. So I'm not gonna get into any of those things. That's what we wanna have a meeting about, that's what we want, we suggest. Um, you know, Pete is correct from the standpoint that this hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is the total cost of all of the patching that is there. Is that a reasonable amount to expect from them to, to actually in the end? Is, is the, the number that we end up coming up with gonna be anything close to that? I think highly unlikely. You do have the option of saying, you know what, all right, fine, let's do something less. If you've got a, a suggestion on that or just a ballpark number or just spitballing or whatever, it's, it's fine. This is the upper end of the number and the real number is, I will, I will freely admit, is going to be less than that. Some of that patching, regardless of how long, was gonna be necessary. As he said, there's a, there's a case of, well, when was it actually starting to break up? When was it actually paved and was it paved later because we were trying to get others, get other stuff done? That's absolutely true. All of those things are absolutely true. So it's up to you as to how you wanna go at this. We've given you a number that is, this, it, it won't, it absolutely won't be more than this that we would wanna be talking about. But you can certainly acknowledge that it's probably not going to be that much or anywhere close to that and do a different, do a different number. It's up to you.
You know, we, we did bring up that there was a lot of soft areas out there. Were they marked at that time? No, they were not. They weren't marked until we were right there, ready to pave the day before. That's when they would, we'd said, we gotta get these marked, we had, had a place where our patching would be done. That's when they were marked. Did they show up a week before, two weeks before, three weeks before? All over along that, that spectrum, but they weren't marked until the day before we paved.
So where, where did the, the statistics come here that I'm reading where it says patching areas which portions showed up immediately? Patching areas which showed up immediately? The, the breakdown.
The breakdown there is that the stuff that was kind of in blue, patching areas that showed up immediately, those are the things that we have current records that that stuff was breaking up right away.
Okay.
And, and the five days in our mind is not, no question, that had nothing to do with the, the fact that the pavement was left exposed for any period of time. So that's been pulled out, we're recommending that that gets paid. The, the kind of light yellow tan pavement area, patching areas which portion showed up, portion showed up immediately? Those were streets where some stuff showed up right away. Not arguing, there's other areas that showed up later. I would use, what was it, is it uh, sun, sunflower as an, as a potential example. They milled that off and the outside edges of that stuff were coming apart day one.
So, so what you're saying is everything that has colored bars in there, those are, those are the things that you, there, there's no morals at all on? And that's what you deducted from the total patching?
Right.
And then, and then what was remaining is?
Right.
Stuff that might be questionable.
What's remaining is the stuff that we're not sure about and that's where that number now. I'm not gonna, I completely agree with them from a standpoint that that's a big number and that, that's probably not what really was potentially damaged from remaining open that long.
Okay.
We could go at it the other way and try to say, well, gee, you know, we know these areas were good until right before paving. But that's a little bit harder to come up with. Maybe between the records that they've got, the records that we've got, we would be able to sit down, hash out what that, what a more realistic perhaps number would be for that. We're not, we're not trying to say that they shouldn't be paid for a hundred and seventy thousand. All we're saying is that there's that much, a hundred and seven, actually, a hundred and seventy-two thousand that is, we're still just not sure about. So it's up to you as to how you wanna handle it.
Tim, where I'm, where I'm looking for, for some further conversation is, on, on Divide Street, for instance, that was open for, for a very, very long time. The point which the discussion started taking place on, on putting that overlayment and, and all that, the concrete and all that kind of stuff was, was far into it after it had been exposed for, for quite some time. And so I, I guess what I would've been looking for, and I apologize, I wasn't at the construction meetings to, to hear the conversations. But right after the overlay, if you were seeing spots that you saw all all alligatored up that you, you felt potentially were going to over the course of time just get bigger and bigger and bigger, whether the, the conversation should've been taking place right away saying, hey, we see these spots, we need to correct these sooner than later or it's gonna become a big monster.
And, and we did, sir. That, that's documented in the weekly minute, minutes. We have the weekly minutes and you can go through each weekly minute and you can see in there that we brought that up. So we gotta look at these, we gotta get them patched, we gotta figure out what you wanna do with them, how you wanna handle that. We just briefly looked at a few before we came in here, like the June twenty-second meeting, it was mentioned in there. Uh, next week, meeting after that, it was also mentioned in there. So go back to the weekly minutes and, and conversations in the field. And, and that's where we're kind of still waiting for some direction on what are we gonna do with these? What are, you know, are we gonna dig them out? You, you have several options to patch a bad spot, you know? Do you go a foot? Do you go four inches? Do you take out the pavement that's broken and put new pavement in its place? There's a lot of scenarios or ways of going about it. And as a contractor, I guess we look towards the engineer that you've hired to give us some direction on, hey, this is what we think the right fix is. This is what we should do with these areas.
As do we rely on them to give us, you know, recommendations as to how we would, you know, carry out the different conversations and?
So we were having those conversations about the areas that showed up right away.
Okay.
And then in the meantime, keep nailing, you start fixing and then a job this size, it breaks out, you know? It, it takes a while to get all that done. That, that patching work is very, very slow work. Yeah.
And if we documented every spot where the pavement flexed underneath the truck? We definitely wouldn't have bought that thick, you know, because once you mill out two inches or four inches, it all flexes. But does it break up right away? But it, it all broke. I mean, there's areas, I mean, even when we did our, our cement tree base, some of that was harder than the asphalt. You know, once, once we got that set in there, but to, to have that documentation saying, there's a soft spot here, I mean, it would be pretty much all over the place because once you take that strength off, it's only driving on a lot.
So are you suggesting everywhere that you would've seen flex that maybe didn't get documented, that that ended up getting patched or?
There you go, it could've been, it could've been flex enough to where it did break up weeks down the line, but it was, there was certainly, there was a lot of movement out there.
We, we actually hope for your case that we got them all. Because areas that we didn't get, if you put a two inch overlay on there, that's not gonna last as long as probably you would like it to for a five, six, nine dollar job. You know, so to have that kind of patching or overrun of six percent isn't, isn't a lot when you don't know what's under there. Um, the, the, the five day, just to go back to that spec, but I've, I've been involved with the North Coast Spec Committee. Actually Ted is the chairman of the committee right now for the North Coast Specs. And we've been involved with it since the very beginning our company has. And so the idea behind the five day spec on, on a state highway is that there's heavy truck loads going down that road. And so if you take this significant amount of pavement off of there and then you expose that to heavy truck loads for a long period of time, it's gonna start to fail. And so they came up with the five day thing as a grace period. And beyond that then, if it starts to fail, then the contractor come and patch a spot where it's busted out. So patching a spot like that on something, let's say it's, it's ten days because it, on the fifth day, it rains for five days. You know, that can happen and then you've got all these trucks going up and down. We didn't see significant damage to these streets because of heavy trucks or big loads or even from our equipment. I mean, we have, we have to do the overlay on that street, so we have to expose it to a loaded asphalt truck? Whether we do it day one or day ten? Either way, that loaded asphalt truck's gonna be on that street in order to pave it. The question is, was there extensive damages done because we let them sit so long? You know, and was it because the cars running on it? If it's because of the cars running on it, it's probably good that we got it fixed anyway. Because that means it wasn't very strong.
And those, and those are the discussions that, that we, you know, we're obligated to the citizens of this town to make sure that we're, we're having those kind of conversations so that we can make the educated decisions on, on this.
One hundred percent agree. And the thing of it is, there's fifteen hundred ton of asphalt in those patches that if you go ahead with not paying the hundred and seventy thousand, would not be paid for, which truly is out on your streets. The benefit of that asphalt being out there is on the streets, that fifteen hundred ton. And, and like Luke said, you know, that's the fifteen hundred ton right now is a gray area that they couldn't say yes. It definitely had to be done. They paid for six hundred of it, so there's roughly fifteen hundred not paid for. And, and it's, and it's not being paid for in any shape or fashion. Not just the additional patching cost, which is twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents a ton, but it's not being paid for at all. Not the base cost of the mix or the oil or any of that. So the, I've had these discussions and arguments about should it be patching or not before? And the question comes down to, well, we got the mix, we're paying for the mix, but should we pay for the added cost of patching? Well, we're not even talking about that here. We're talking about not paying for that fifteen hundred tons, period.
All right, commissions and the other, someone I guess, like what kind of, I guess, dollar number are you guys just looking at?
Well, we had responded from our previous meeting when we met and discussed this originally and came up with, it was eleven thousand something, that, that we would be willing to reduce the patching by. Um, for the, for the reason that we did the patching, but these were much larger areas. So we, we went back to the original mix price on those relative and didn't opt out the extra twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents a ton for patching because we were able to do these larger areas as if we were paving the street. But, but I don't think there's any contention with more engineering or us that, that this mix is the quantity that's out there on the streets. We've kind of agreed to what the quantities are. It's a matter of, I, I think right now they're saying, you know, you know, if you guys would've done this right away, we wouldn't have to put any of that out there. And, and we're saying, no, the streets needed it one way or the other.
Well, I, 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 your last comment, I agree. Bottom line, we, we got good streets out there and hopefully in a year's time, we don't see anything falling apart. And, and even worse, in two years' time, we see something falling apart.
So probably won't take the abuse of our trucks game.
Then we'll not, we will not. The tough thing is that we sit here, you're the professional contractors, you're the professional engineers and we need to depend on both of you the whole time to be looking out for the best of our interests and the twenty-five hundred people that live here. And it's, it's, it's very difficult to hear both sides and wonder where we're supposed to come from. We wanna go by your guys' recommendation. And I, I know exactly what you guys are saying too, but it's, it's, it's just.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds to me like we need to go through more detail. It sounds like it's gonna be more than what we need to meet.
Kind of true.
Well, I was just gonna say, the motion is not to deny Pete.
Right.
It's just delay or delay.
Yeah.
Okay, not reduce, until you can have a thorough discussion with everybody.
Okay, not reduce until you can have a thorough discussion with everybody present that should be present and participating.
Yeah.
And this isn't the appropriate.
Well, the unfortunate thing is it needs to be at a, a meeting with all of us. And that's hard to do other than there's regular scheduled times. So I don't want to have a meeting with Nancy and myself again and everybody else questioning what, what our conversation or the decision and so it needs to be the full board that needs to hear. And that's, and that's not always easy to do. I agree.
So that everybody has notice that what's going to be discussed.
So we, we do have a motion and a second on the, on the table. I think we plan a discussion, there's, there's a big commissioners. And the, Monty, would you please read the motion again?
The motion was to, to approve the recommended payment to the contractor and continue discussions with regard to the $170,000 requested reduced. Made by Mr. Pillar, second by Commissioner Hill.
And the pay estimate then would be 1.349.
65961.
Okay, we have motion and second. Rule call.
Noah.
Hi.
Kat.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Water.
Hi. Motion carried.
And you'll coordinate that. I'll follow up. We'll need to set up a special meeting.
And we hope you guys can, Tim or representative.
Well, I think you pretty much know our stance on it. So you'll have to deal with the engineer and see what you guys decide you want to do. And then I guess we've got a contract that will follow the laws of the contract.
Any reason to sit and have a quick discussion about whether we might want to set that meeting up now or should we just deal with it Monty tomorrow and get it squared with him?
Yeah, same. Yeah, my, my schedule is going to be up there, so.
Okay. So I, I would like to do that as soon as we can, you know, I'm, I mean, if we could do a process by the end of this week or early next week yet, so if we could, in case you let Monty know tomorrow what your days are. Even these work better for everybody, I think, will make the best. So we don't know the, what not.
Yep.
Just coordinate.
I got with you and probably done too, just to see if we can get it done sooner rather than later.
Yes. Five C, engineering budget update.
How do you do that? Jared Lawrence, I wasn't involved in writing the contract with the city for this work, but I'm staying in help and administer it now. So as we sit at this point, we're not over budget, but I don't know, did you send an email around? Monty, okay, it's tidy. We just been being a little bit over budget, mostly due to some of the work that was added throughout that project. T-21 added a bunch of 70,000 bucks construction, the E stuff, the extra milling. Well, we did give more resources to the job as it went to get this stuff done. And we need more people on site, we added it. When the job's done with, we anticipate being about 28,000 bucks over budget on our contract, which is about 3.9%. I guess when we can proceed as, as planned and do that, or we can look at scaling back some services from now to the job and try and reduce that amount of discussion. Or I guess with the more work that was added, maybe you're okay being a little bit over, anticipating being a little bit over engineering as well. We tried to show engineering on the bottom of like cost estimates when we're adding change orders. So you kind of had an idea of what that was coming back to, I think. Otherwise, yeah.
So it was more engineering, I guess, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, you know, it's like looking at. There was a, you know, I guess like a deduction for this, you know, this like patching work as well, you know? There's from more themselves and.
Like, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, I mean, if I guess you guys were always hard on this, I guess, you know, these milled streets cannot be open for more than like five days. And if you guys were the ones overseeing the job all the time, you know?
You want us to provide a deduction for engineering services?
Right. Probably if you guys are in charge of the project and, you know?
I guess, um, don't think that our engineering services caused, we, we don't direct the contractor what to do. And, you know, we feel, we pointed out how they've been outside of the specification for some of these, these areas and we're attributing a lot of this stuff to that reason. We don't run the job like that. We don't, we don't have, we can't dictate the means and methods and timing and operations of the contractor. So we don't, like, we're not taking the responsibility for any additional patch.
So you're saying basically on day 10 of the open street, why didn't you tell them, hey, guys, you're already double your time out of spec. We need to get things cracked and double your time.
And I think leading, leading into that, that same thing there is, uh, you know, if, and I haven't read the, the minutes into the, the details there, but the allegations were, were waiting for responses back or direction on this. And presumably the direction comes through us to you, to the contractors, right? For how we go about the patching and all that kind of stuff. So, so I understand where everybody's coming from there and saying, hey, get them back their word. Delays in getting back, is there not some shared responsibility maybe?
I don't even recall the time where we ever delayed any decision. And if there's a decision we made, it was brought to you guys and assist as many as possible. John, do you remember the time where we didn't make a decision for two weeks on something or a week on something?
Not, not on anything that was anywhere direct, anywhere related to this. And that would have been one of the points that I would have probably just read and listened to that on some of the details.
Well, I, I, I understand where the question's coming from.
Me too.
So we, you know, review the, the, the details of the, the discussions from the construction meetings and stuff like that. You know, that, that question's going to hang out there a little bit.
Fair question. It is.
Did that ever happen, Jared, with the, where you told upfront earlier? Why are we, why are we waiting so long for this to, why, why are you keeping stuff open so long?
All I can tell you is that I look back at the construction, the pre-construction meeting and we did talk about it. We talked about their schedule. We talked about them not wanting to leave the areas open for that long because they don't want a lot much traffic on those areas. And there were plans for a like, put a tack coat into the surfaces and have it hold up. So it was talked about. The plan changed. I know we had weekly construction meetings, but that was not discussed. So it was brought up and where else had those specifications?
I don't think there was ever a tack coat sprayed over any milled spots where I guess.
No. We talked about it and then there was, you know, obviously kind of maybe some need for patching and stuff like that. So they pretty much told us. So anyway, I anticipate being slightly over budget, but I can do some things. We got chip sealing going on this fall and the spring. If you'd like, we can not perform inspection services during those. It's going to happen. There's, so there's some things that we could do if you'd like us to try and get back within budget, otherwise.
What are the consequences to us on not doing some of those?
Yeah, that makes me nervous too.
I, I would rather be involved. But there are some cities that do that without inspection services. They'll hire the county to do it or have their own staff do it. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to give you ideas to reduce the budget or reduce the cost if you think that's necessary here. Otherwise, we're slightly over budget, I anticipate. We're not yet.
I think our stance the whole time is we, we've had bumps in the road that we understood that are going to happen. And we, we don't, never wanted to Band-Aid anything. We want to do things the right way. And I, obviously adding that first pay estimate adds quite a bit itself. So, um, but I don't.
I know, like 100, like 800,000 over in construction and it'd be about 28,000 over in engineering.
Do you have the crack ceiling figured into that?
No.
Crack ceiling doubled?
Yeah, so 23,000 bucks or something, something like that. So 820,000.
The crack ceiling doubled? Was it 60,000?
It puts down like 127,000. You can see a little waste though.
Yeah.
There's a lot, there's a lot of cracks up there.
Do we need to take action now for any, uh, for engineering?
If you want me to change and try and reduce, I can, or just finally finish the job as needed. I can separate extra costs for the, you know, extra milling on some streets or the extra work at WRT.
So what you're really doing right now is you're giving a heads up that says, if we continue to do the engineering that you wanted us to do, it's, it's not only likely, but probable that, that, that we will exceed the budget. And this is, this is what we estimated it to be. So actionable item would be if, if we want them to take shortcuts, is, is what I'm hearing, to try to save money on, on, on the contract. Then we would make a motion to direct them to take out some of, some of the content of what they would do for the remainder of the project. And, and you've already alluded to the fact that none of us want to take shortcuts. I, I don't believe.
I can break the rest down for the extra of a seat. Like I said, when we've done change orders, we try to put the engineering at the bottom, so you know, Jared, but we haven't did an official amendment at those times, which we could have, I guess.
Okay, do you want to direct more in specific direction or continue to use our services to the fullest for the remainder of the project? I guess what's, I guess, you know, I guess the sidewalk, that's why, that's why, I guess, some WRT.
So on the south side, there was some bad curb and sidewalk. The curb work would be the city's responsibility, but WRT is doing the sidewalk. And that will be billed directly to WRT, whatever those costs are.
So in that work, do we need to have?
Separate.
Have, I guess, you guys oversee it or what?
Right, so part of the reason for the overrun is just all these electrics. So if you want, I can do separate invoices for those or separate them. So Monty knows how to assess those costs to that project. We can do whatever you want.
You know, because of the curb work that I've like seen in town, I'm kind of basically disappointed in this and the way that everything is scheduled. And I've seen like, you know, it's like there is a curb pour, you know? It's backfilled and then later, later than, you know, everything's poured back up. And if you guys are all seeing that, it's like, it's a blur.
I'm not sure which case you're talking about.
It's a lot of, a lot of areas.
So comment on cases, look right up for last meeting if you all remember. Thursday last week, PCS is supposed to be in New York. I haven't seen any concrete contractor.
They're in town now.
They are. They showed up today.
Yep, and they were there this afternoon doing.
The day they left, we found out the day they left. We, we were tearing out in front of them, getting ready, so they pour. And all of a sudden, we got a phone call, hey, these guys are leaving. They're not coming back till next week. I called them and I'm like, well, we let you know. And I was like, uh, no, you didn't. You said your foreman was leaving, not your whole crew. And they left for two weeks. We had no control over that. They had other jobs, they had other priorities and they left. They're back now. I called them and I said, I hope you brought a crew because you got a lot of work. I said, we've got a lot of stuff open here waiting to get back.
Bar, barishly in their defense though, guys, is there was a lot of heavy work here and they didn't plan on. I mean, they've been here since end of April versus May.
What he brought up is my question too. I saw them pour the curb, fill it in, and then they dug it out again. And now they're filling it in again and smoothing it again. Are we paying for that to do it twice? I don't know why they feel that the first time.
Well, they, they would backfill behind the curb, but once you pour the curb, you got to let that sit. You can't really be doing a bunch of vibrating work.
Yeah.
Besides that one to set. And if they would have came along and dug out something else, it would have been the sidewalk behind it.
But see, like on my curb, they, they did the curb work.
Okay.
They filled it all back in and now they're back today and they dug it out again to put in that sidewalk.
The curb ground.
Right, so why did you fill it back in?
I don't know why they.
Probably just to make.
And aren't we paying for that?
Yeah, probably just to make, so, no.
That's not additional.
Okay. And that's I think the question he had is, they're doing a lot of double.
That's my guess too. They, we only had two or three spots where it was an incorrect, is it? How many jobs?
Specific spots.
Three, yeah.
Go back.
Yeah.
Take back out and you do the curb, but none of those had that. Well, except for the one. All the other two were, were taken care of.
Right.
Elsewhere.
Some, it's just a cleanup, just someone's walking on the sidewalk. Pouring those off and stuff.
You know, just, uh, just, I know, I know your frustration because of, you know, we've been here all summer and there's been areas where it started early and still aren't done. And, you know, when you look at that map and the magnitude of what was done here, you know, the question came up earlier, why couldn't you just worked here, got all this done? Go over here, get all this done, go over here, get this done, milling, paving, sidewalk, whatever. We've tried to keep everything ahead of each other and, and it's, it was such a large job. We were literally just about on top of each other at times, trying to push the other one out in front. And, and to get, if, if we'd have done, say, this area, get this all done, over here, here, get this area, that all done, this would be a two or three year job. There, there's no way we could have been at the point we are right now today had we done segments at a time. And, and this thing would have been drawn out for, and we've seen those jobs. They've designed jobs like that and we've built jobs like that where it is paced and you only do so much this year and so much next year and so much, you know, thereafter. But that isn't the way this one was set up. And to be quite honest with you, I think it's best that it wasn't in, in the overall scheme of things. This is a miserable career, I get that. When it's all said and done and we're gone and out of here, hopefully everybody will be happy. But to do the magnitude of what was done here in the short timeframe that we did it in, I think if you talk to other towns of a job this size, like Harvey had a similar thing and it was a two year job.
So to answer your question, what, dig out, curb, move the curb back? Is there subcontractor? Something, there is a project completion date. Project completion date is September 22nd. Tell them exactly how to do everything. We just tell them to get the job done by then. And it looks like they're on schedule for that, unless we told them something different before we were here. Oh, okay.
We could probably get some out of time for all the overruns.
Because we've got one.
By contract.
You've got a leak of time extension. You can request a time extension, the change order if you think you need it. Anything else for B as far as engineering goes? Not doing, forgets about doing property survey, pause it here for that. I guess you'll reply me, see you in two weeks or we'll just fly back here, get rid of the street.
Thank you. Five D, BND requisition number four.
Based on the recommended payment for the, estimate for our request to bank in North Dakota will be $1,416,845.19. Cover the construction and engineering since the last pay estimate.
Questions for Monty or Alice?
Make a motion to approve request requisition number four.
Okay, motion by Pillar. Second, but stern discussion. Rule call.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Kat.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Water.
Hi, motion carried. And five E, crushing. Maybe we've touched base on this. Did you get? So if we want to have this done, we need to make motion to have them mobilize, and that'd be sometime this fall. There's no specific date, but it'd be before, before winter, whenever that might be, but. I think it's well worth our money, and we need, we need the product, we got a lot sitting out there that we can use. So if we wanna do this, we just need to direct them, make a motion, direct them to have this scheduled.
Sure.
Yes, go ahead, yeah, thank you.
Gave Jerry some information with regard to our sales tax fund. As of tomorrow, when the next deposit comes in, the city's share will be just slightly over one million dollars. Taking this cost of this out of the sales tax fund to alleviate some of the burden on the citizens would still leave us just under nine hundred thousand in the, in the fund right now. Our scheduled payments for the last two projects over the next twenty, thirty years, right now, will sit in at forty-five thousand dollars a year. So I think there is still an opportunity for that fund to grow, should something else come up.
So this would potentially slide for the sales tax?
That would be my recommendation. To try and assess it back, I think, would be, and that's where the other problem went and stuff.
So then, I guess, um, is where we gonna buy back some of this, this latest, I guess, extreme project, too, if we put that part?
Yes, yeah, that, uh, that would be the thirty-five thousand dollars a year part of those pledges with maintenance projects. That's based on around ten percent.
What was that percent?
Ten percent, we're buying down the project with ten percent.
The city.
The city, yes.
Yeah, what's wish of the board?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. And the motion is to.
See, this discussion using sales tax funds?
Yes.
And direct Mayo to schedule this to be done. We'll have a motion as second. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Cap.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi. Thank you.
Just got one comment on that. When I think of that, it's kind of approximate economies that are out there, and we'll have those guys mix whatever useful material they can, and as we measure the pile, when it gets done, to see that way, how much is in the next pile.
Now.
You're gonna coordinate where that piles will go? What was we on?
Try to put it right back where the other one was, that's, that's what we tried to do.
The plan?
When, when we had them guys going, because you had your other recycled, common ready pile, right? We'll try to get it close to that, as far as they can, I don't know how, if they're gonna bring it in and conveyor it over there, or truck it, or, or, or. We're gonna try to get it. They were initially thought they were just gonna, uh, crush it, put it right where it's at, but there's no room back there.
Right, it's really soft back there, too.
It's soft, it's wet, it's, you know, you got the power line, you got the, the lagoon, so, that, we need to get it up back up where it's hard accessible for you guys.
You know where you want it to happen.
Yeah, I don't think I wanna, boy, just most of the road is a little maybe back a little bit, but I think before you get started, we.
Boy, yeah.
Go out there, kind of size it up a little better.
You can just tell them, put a five hundred gallons where you want it, and that's where we'll start going. So we'll, there, they'll start.
All right, seven A. Introduction to reading approval of ordinance is, uh, nuisance junk vehicle ordinance.
I don't have anything ready for first reading, but I did provide you an ordinance that Chief Wolf found online. Pretty well covers everything that's been discussed over and over the times here. As I said in my notes, it probably would be a good idea for, uh, planner, chief of police, to sit down with Attorney Donovan and draft something for your reading approval the next week.
I didn't read every word of it, but I thought it was pretty generic enough and easy enough that it's, it's not too confusing, definitely.
Chief Wolf said it looked like something that could be enforced, pretty.
What I, what I particularly liked about it is it's, it takes what we have and, and increases, or decreases that time, that wait time significantly. And, and it's got some pretty good teeth to it, I think.
And I like that Jim found it, because there are guys that have to enforce it, and with us, but, um, it's something that they're, that they're happy with doing, that's gonna make it easier to do. Okay. Eight A. Welcome back, Steve Probar. Who else has you get in here? All right, Shan- Shannon, uh, we have a, the variance request from Steve.
Pardon my, I need you last here, so, for the, here. Need it, I'm gonna put a deck on the east side of my house. Uh, I'm eighteen feet off the east property line, fourteen feet south of the north property line. So house isn't where it's supposed to be to begin with, it's supposed to be twenty and twenty. Uh, what I wanna do is put out, uh, an eight-foot deck, be eight foot, so I'd be a total of ten feet off this property line. And then it won't go any further north in the house. In fact, it's gonna be a little bit narrower than this. And then go down here, the steps will end up coming out on the driveway. So the end result is, need a ten-foot front yard variance on the east side and six-foot one on the north side. And it's going to be, the deck is going to be similar, yeah, look, yeah, similar to this one. It's gonna be going out over here, but as far as visibility, it's gonna be the open rails, I hope, hope I can find them again. Uh, it'll be open like this. And there's my lot pin here, and it shows the two flags above where the, the deck would attach to the house here.
Pointed out on this, Steve, where.
Oh, okay, here's my lot pin here, and over here, and over here. So it'll actually stick out, as far as the deck itself, it'll stick out a couple of feet further than what the steps are, and then the steps for the deck are actually gonna go, go down to the driveway, they won't come out. Right.
Okay.
And after I looked at the lumber, actually, the house is gonna end up being, or the deck will be about two feet in on the north side, and two feet in off here, because what's gonna put it all the way across, that would take an eighteen foot, you can't get eighteen foot, so it's gotta go down sixty foot, so. Couple of feet shorter.
So just a couple of feet past what the existing steps are?
As far as going to the east, right, yeah. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't measure it out, and I kinda looked down here, looks like that drives there was put on the front, process been there for, I have no idea how long.
Questions for Steve?
So I approve one similar, kind of, where the, the steps were going to the south into their driveway.
Yeah, I don't intend on putting any sidewalk out there, that's why I figured I wanted to go down, go down to the south and come off that way.
I make a motion to approve. The variance.
Okay, motion by Hack. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Cap.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi, motion carried.
Thank you.
Have fun.
I'm gonna have a party while I come over, you know, put it up. Oh, I see.
All right, uh, water sewer. Have, have, uh, the water guys talked about cleaning out the millings and stuff and some of the?
I haven't talked to them, but I'll see them, I'll see them. But I would think, I guess, we probably would wait till, till the chips are done.
They haven't been working with Mayo as well.
Ted, have, did you guys, did they bring that ditch witch in and start cleaning some of those out?
I didn't hear what the comment was.
The, did they, cleaning out the manholes and some of the other spots, did they bring out that ditch witch in?
Yeah, they've done a lot of that, we have to work with the city on, on using their, their truck trucking, maybe, so. There might be a couple left that we still have to do.
There was a couple we did manually, like, does he get asphalt in there, it's too heavy, that thing doesn't work, so you get basically the old school method, a rope in a bucket, go down there, start filling it, pull on it.
Street cemetery?
I have nothing with this thing.
Finance, busing.
Um, other than the busing, getting ready for school, starting on Wednesday? We have nothing.
We don't have any of the batteries we have so far, or?
Um, I haven't asked Peg, what is her, do you know her, Monty?
She's.
She's full, I know, she had a list.
She's full, so I never read her all sixty.
She's been waiting last year. That would be it.
Police, fire, forestry?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, and Buster?
I've been gone for just like two weeks, so I have nothing to add.
All right. Moving on to eleven A, school signage, school zone signage.
We discussed it several months ago, both enhanced penalties if they're in the school zone. Jim, I think, has worked with Dave a little bit as far as locating where these signs would go, it's looking like we'll need anywhere between eleven and thirteen. Basically, they can just go under the speed limit and designate the school zone, start at the end. So. You know, like I said, it's been discussed, I don't know if you need a motion to go ahead and purchase the signs, I don't think it's gonna reach any level.
I think if we went back and looked at minutes from about a year ago, I think we already made motions and, and direction at, at that, to, to move forward, or I was still in the position. So now I think it's just moving forward with the plan that we already put into place.
Yeah, it needs to be done. Dave, anything you wanna add to this?
Gone a couple of times, a couple of times, I'm gonna drive around here.
Any concerns?
No, I think there's gonna be existing posts that are already in that we can use, I don't think we'll have to add any new posts.
Excellent. But we would, this, this would be good detail to, uh, maybe reference in the paper, I'm not telling you how to read in your paper, but, uh, says it'll be something new and different, and, uh, you know, you can put a big billboard out there, and unless you tell people you've got a new billboard in town, they may not notice it until it's there for six months, so.
All right, eleven B, sales tax measure. Uh, let's, if this is something we want to put on the ballot, we need to get, get on and out, correct, Monty?
That's to be certified to the county honor号by September fourth, the fourth PM.
Okay. Maybe any more thoughts or discussion of changing that? Or adding or not on the ballot?
So is there any kind of, I guess, you know, I guess, like, cost on our end, you gonna add this on the ballot?
Just the cost of the program, it should be less than a couple hundred dollars. It goes on the optical read ballot, so it has to be programmed, it ain't much harder to talk.
No, this is the first month we're gonna be receiving sales tax dollars, correct?
Uh, the second month, actually.
Second month since.
January.
January. I think we need to try to do something, we're, we're, we're missing on that a lot, so.
We need a motion on this?
Yeah, we do.
I would make the motion to have this to ballot.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Casey?
So I guess when this first got, I guess, like, over the, I guess, why did, was it accept? That twenty-five dollar?
Is, I don't, I don't know, is that the home rule charter?
That was basically a pretty standard implementation of a, like, a twenty-five dollar cap on it. I think virtually every home rule city that's adopted a sales tax has gone with the twenty-five dollars to start with them. About seventy percent have gone to change now, to remove it, or raise it. So, and it was kind of followed along with a model home rule charter, that's kind of like a lot of other ordinances.
Steve, what's just doing, removing that twenty-five dollar cap?
Yes.
Yes.
I could just add what Monty was saying, yeah, the, we went through what did it, was kind of a part of the play thing, there were two things in there. You just have it run for a couple of years, a twenty-five dollar cap, and that's what everybody else was doing back.
And how long were you, was that, any, any idea?
Wow, ninety? Cause it's early, maybe earlier.
Might be time, might be time for an upgrade.
Let's see, early nineties.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Cap.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Wolf.
Wolf.
Hi, motion carried. New business, uh, twelve A, emergency manager Carmen Reed received the grant funds to assist cities develop emergency plans. The county water board is also willing to fund a portion of the plan development. County due to cutbacks is asking the cities to participate in funding these plans for the requested amount from the cities will be about four hundred and twenty-five dollars to eight hundred and fifty dollars, depending on if the county will participate at all. What more do we need?
Basically, we have no formal emergency plan in place, we have the multi-hazard mitigation plan, which was through the county as well. So this would develop emergency plans for flooding, tornado, all of those.
This is a county plan, right?
It would actually be our city plan.
Our city?
It would be, they would work with us through, through various meetings to tailor this plan directly to the city of pageant.
Shen, just.
That's, I was just gonna say, uh, we have that, so that's, I mean, she'd give it to me, the whole thing, and it just needs to be, you know, the names and, and finish out all the, the details, but all the.
They've done the rough plans there, yeah.
You would just need to fill in.
Okay. Well, I think if the counties want to participate in it for, not, I think it's something we wanna have for our community. And would that be you, Shannon, working with Carmen to finish that off, then?
Jerry, do you have a motion?
Yes, yeah.
Motion to proceed forward with the.
Emergency plan?
Where's the operations?
Okay, we have a motion by Hack.
What dollar amount, Jason?
So four twenty-five to up to eight hundred and fifty, depending on if the county will participate at all. Yes, I don't know if you know if they're gonna, when will we know, Monty, if they're.
Carmen Reed approaches them again before they're final budget.
So why don't we assume they're waiting to, and then, and then it could come back.
Yeah, can we do it that way, Monty?
Yeah. Okay.
You, you got that out of my mouth.
Proceed with the emergency plan up to four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. By Hack. We have a second, you're doing.
I'll second that.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Cap.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi. Motion carried. September third meeting. So that's the.
We always have holidays on the first Monday.
Can we move to the fourth, Tuesday, fourth? Works for me. All right, we're gonna move our meeting to Tuesday, the fourth. Approval of the bills.
I didn't really much, I didn't send them off, they're late a month on the. I do have one that I didn't get on there, they actually have the box on that pickup, that flatbed on there and they're actually, $21, $21 cheaper than what they're quoting for, so the bill came in at $37, $8 and $4.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Meeting adjourned.